Lawyers and actuaries.
Yeah.
No, an actuary did till I got on this board. I'm very grateful for what they do, so.
So if you will, I was gonna start out with just a little video for you.
So Jack has something to start us off with.
Yeah, we thought we'd, just to kick off the meeting and get us all in the mood. Don't hit that start button yet.
Get us in the mood? We just turned the lights.
We were gonna show a video, but you know, we tried to capture some of our members telling their story about teaching and also the relevance of financial security to their future. So this is the latest video that we did with our communication staff of a teacher, a art teacher, has an amazing story, and I want you to make sure you hear how she graduated from college and what she's doing now. It's an amazing detour in life for someone that was on a very different track in life, who became a schoolteacher in a city classroom in California. So enjoy it, guys.
That was record time, outstanding.
Excellent.
We didn't have friction right here. If we didn't have gravity, it would just keep going and going and going. I haven't seen one like that before. That's excellent. All right, ready break. I am Angel Mejico. I teach visual arts in the Art Academy, and I'm in year 17 of teaching, although it feels like year one. I feel like I have a boost that's been put into me, and I have all of these ideas. You have to smile, though, because you like it. And I want to just take the arts to an entirely new level. I feel that it's a universal subject. It's in everything. Are you getting more comfortable now?
Yeah.
Cool.
What's unique about the art program is that it does allow students to express all sides of themselves.
You look disgusting.
What makes Dr. Mejico so great is that she fully embraces that. She fully understands the whole child. Everyone loves Dr. Mejico.
I would say Dr. M is like really caring. She's very intelligent and just like really wants to help us and do the best for us.
I feel that teaching found me. When I was in medical school, I saw some different signs that were leading me towards the teaching profession. And when I was working at a volunteer clinic, one day, there was a young student that came in with different ailments, but as it turned out, all the student really needed was some help with math. So then I decided to make the switch. And I think for me, it was the best decision I've ever made because I was able to save lives in a different way. I'm not looking forward to retirement right now because I still feel like there's so much more to do. I think with CalSTRS, with the different workshops that they provide for us, although I'm not ready to retire, so beneficial. And although we don't always want to think about the next stage in our life, it's important to be prepared for it. Can you write your name on it?
Yes.
And then we're gonna stick it on the wall.
Okay.
Okay? That's a good one. I think I love teaching because you can really make a difference every day. With the arts, when they know how impactful it can be on people's lives and how they can change lives and make people smile, they can bring tears to people's eyes, and they can bring awareness to different causes. For some kids that are really shy, that are introverted, they can speak through their art. And so their art really does give them another language and a voice. And I think it's amazing to be able to do that without having to speak a word. It's like a big wave where my teaching and their learnings meet, and then it collides, and then it just explodes. I think they feed off of my passion for my subject matter, my excitement to help the community, but I let them know that I'm not gonna give up on them. I refuse.
Bye.
See you later. Good job today.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good work. Although they may leave you, they never really leave you. And I think that's why I give my students nicknames, so they always know that they're part of my Ohana, my family, and they're with you forever.
Many people have left medical profession as a physician to become an art teacher in a city classroom. Great story, huh?
That's great.
I don't know, actually.
She said Ohana.
Yeah. 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 Anyway, I just thought it'd set a nice tone to what we're doing today.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thanks. Thanks, Jack. We are going to jump into item five, which is our actuarial valuation, which is a mouthful. So we welcome, so we know Nick Collier and Mark Olman from Seattle. Are you both in Seattle still?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So with Melman, and we're gonna walk through the actuarial evaluation, and the board can kind of get a sense, you're gonna give us an overview a little bit about this process and why we do this and help us make decisions for today. So take it away, Mark.
And before we start, let's just jump in real quick. Just wanted to update everyone. So if you recall, the governor knew some when he released his budget in January, he was planning to send money to CalSTRS to both help the employers and also to also contribute toward reducing their share of unfunded liability. This morning, the governor released his May revised budget. And good news, especially for the employers, the amount of money the state is proposing to send to help the employers has increased by about $150 million. So again, it's gonna be adopted by the legislature, but if it passes, it will, the state will pay on behalf of the employer. So we will still get the money we're scheduled to get from the funding plan. So we will still get 18.13% next July, but the employers will only have to pay 16.7%. The state will cover 1.43%. And the following year, the state will pay 1% on behalf of the employers. So that's kind of where it is right now. And then now we'll just have to wait until it goes through the legislative process. And just as a reminder, since it's not official yet until it's adopted, none of this has been reflected in what you're seeing today. With this, I'll leave it to Mark and Nick to lead us.
That is a good comment. Thank you, David. Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, David.
Nick, Mark.
With her.
I just wanna break in and say good afternoon again. And a couple of comments before we turn it over to Mark and to Nick is that we annually do a valuation of the defined benefit plan. But sometimes it's a snapshot of this time of June 30th, 2018. It's very helpful, I think, for board members if you look at, try to look at a history and more than one year of results and then put that together. On page TRB 53 shows the history, at least 20 years of the investment returns. If you look at those, you'll see that there isn't a single year in which we've earned 7% in any single year. So as we look at long-term assumptions, you have to understand every year, it's probably gonna be more or less than what the assumptions assume, but you have to take a long-term view of that. If you look at TRB 55, that's a more than 40-year history of the funded status. If you start out at 1975, you would think this plan would exist today because it was 29%. So you have to keep that in mind when you hear in the papers and the news, you know, what funded status we are, and there's doom and gloom surrounding all of that. We have to keep in mind that if you have a good plan and you stick to it, you can have success. So just keep in mind where we were, where we went to before the 2000 tech bubble, and then where we are now. Just keep in mind that a good plan and steady progress will generally win the race in pension funding. So I just wanted to point those two things out, especially for new board members to try to get a perspective on when we give the report where we are. So with that, I'll just turn it over to Mark to start the presentation.
Great. Thanks, Rick. Great introduction. It is a pleasure to be here today to present the June 30, 2018 actuarial valuations of the defined benefit, defined benefit supplement, cash balance benefit plan, and the Medicare premium payment plan to you. I want to take just a moment to thank all the teachers in the room because it is Teacher Appreciation Week.
Yes.
And no occupation is more important than yours. That was a great video that was up there, and we are deeply honored to be able to work together with you, the board, and with the system staff to help secure the retirement security of the teachers of California. We're going to start with the defined benefit program today. Four key takeaways that we're going to go over are, first, the funding plan is working. That's a great takeaway. Second, the funding plan is complex. Third, there is still risk, although the funding plan has greatly reduced the risk to the funding of the plan. And lastly, I had a, I did have a fourth one there. Oh, lastly, the state, when it comes to contribution rate changes, the state takes the majority of the risk for changes in unfunded, the unfunded actuarial obligation in terms of rate changes. The state's rate is much more sensitive to investment gains and losses than the employer's rate. So those are the four key points. There are two key reports that the board looks at every year in terms of the funding of the system to really keep track of how the system is doing. Last November, David and Rick went over the Funding Levels and Risk Report with you. That was based on the June 30, 2017 actuarial valuation and reflected the 9% asset return for the year ending June 30, 2018. So now today, we're presenting the June 30, 2018 actuarial valuation. It reflects really the same asset returns through June 30, 2018, but we've now taken the actual census data as of 2018, and we're essentially recalibrating the liabilities with this study. Then the additional thing that's happening this year is the five-year report, which the system is required to give to the legislature. David and Rick will be discussing that with you, I think, two agenda items after we're done, but we will try and frame our presentation so that it complements that presentation for you. The funding legislation was very important for two reasons. First, it provided additional funding from the state, the employers, and the members so that the plan is on track to reach 100% funded or very close by 2046. It also put in place the supplemental contributions ability to vary. The board has limited ability to change the contribution rates. And as long as the funding plan is on track, which it is, our projections of the funding status are not very interesting because they always end at 100% funded in 2046. Now, that's actually kind of what an actuary likes. We like things like that that don't look very interesting. However, the projections of contribution rates are more interesting because CalSTRS is now acting like the actuaries' vision of a traditional pension plan, where since the benefits are defined, that's why we call it a defined benefit plan, that means the contributions have to adjust. And in this case, it's those supplemental contributions being made by the state and the employers which have to adjust to fund the benefits. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Nick to start you off with the numbers behind the valuation, and then I'm going to pull out the crystal ball and look at some projections with you.
Thanks, Mark. As David alluded to, this is a snapshot as of June 30, 2018 of the DB program. If it's possible to say that for a CalSTRS DB program valuation, this was pretty straightforward this year. If you look at the investment returns that Rick showed, the 9% is actually the closest to the assumption, the closest to 7% we've had over the last 20 years. So we really don't have any surprises this year. We're pretty much in line with the projections Dave showed you back in November with the risk report. So moving on to the key results, valuation is kind of made up of four key components, kind of ingredients to the valuation. You see the member data, the assets, the financial information, the plan provisions, and the actual assumptions. So the first thing we do is we take the member data, the plan provisions, and the assumptions, and we project what benefits we expect people earn or what benefits people are earning and are gonna earn in the future after applying the 2% annual adjustment. So we create a stream of benefit payments that we expect to be paid based on service earned as of the valuation date. And then we take those and use the time value of money and the investment return assumption and put a present value on those future payments as of June 30, 2018, and that is what we call the actuarial obligation. So that's basically what the system owes. We then compare it to the actual value of assets, which is the assets as of the valuation date. If you remember, we do smooth those assets due to volatility in the investment, in the investment markets. So that is slightly different than the fair value of market assets, but pretty close this year. So you take the actual obligation of $297.6 billion compared to the actual value of assets of $190.5 billion, and you get an unfunded actuarial obligation of $107.2 billion. So that's the amount that needs to be paid off by future contributions. Another way to look at it is the funded ratio is a common metric, and that divides the actual value of assets by the actual obligation. So therefore, the actual value of assets is 64% of the actual obligation. And you'll note the funded ratio has moved up from 62.6 last year to 64.0% this year, I think, is what we've communicated. I know these guys have done a great job communicating is, is we expect to kind of tread water a little bit on the funded ratio for the next few years, for the past few and the next few years, and we're starting to make a little bit of progress. And that's partly due to our investment return assumption surpassing the assumption. But we expect to slowly make progress, and Mark will talk about that when he looks forward, and then we move towards 100% as we go along there. But obviously, all our projections tend to be based on a 7% assumption, and we know, one thing we know is we're not gonna hit 7%, so it's gonna be a little bumpy. When we look at the DB program valuation, I use, I say valuation, I really should say valuations because there's a number of subvaluations that we do, and which is kind of what Mark talked about with the complexity of the one, of the valuation. And one we do is we look at the 1990 structure. So that is what were the benefits that were, the benefit level of 1990. So we create this hypothetical benefits of what people would have earned if the benefit levels had not changed, and we do a valuation based on that structure. And then we kind of figure out what the benefits would have been paid, and then we apply that same process to the actual, to the valuation assets, and we take out a lower level of benefits. So we have separate actuarial obligation and a separate actuarial valuation for the 1990 structure. And we do a couple, another couple of groups. And then this is gonna be, I think this is a little bit familiar. I think you may have seen this before, and this is kind of how we break down in the funding policy, which is obviously based on the funding law that was enacted. We kind of allocate the assets and the actual obligation to the state and the employer. As you see, the state share is, of the unfunded actuarial obligation is the $33 billion there, and so that's, you know, we did the actuarial obligation as of, based on the 1990 structure, and we calculated what the assets theoretically would have been based on the 1990 structure, and we figured out the shortfall was about $33 billion. Similarly, we do a process for the employers, and that difference is about $73 billion. And if you look really closely, you'll see there's the orange sliver, which is our unallocated UAO, which is one that wasn't specifically addressed, the funding of, in the funding legislation, and that's about $300 million. So, sure.
I just have one question. You will at some point explain, for those of us who are new to this, the allocation of the obligation, actuarial obligation for the 1990, and how it impacts performance here in terms of investment performance, who that benefits and who it does not benefit?
Definitely, we, in our, yes, yes.
Because I'm, that's something I don't totally understand.
Yeah, so in the report, we specifically show the results for, as I talked about, those kind of individual subvaluations of this is how much of the actual obligation, and this is how much of the assets are allocated to the 1990 structure. Mark's gonna spend a bit of time talking about kind of the, what that means as far as the state obligation. Did you want to?
No, the only thing I would like to add also, when we do item six, which is the report to the legislature, because it's such a, our funding plan is so complex, we included a section in the report to the legislature that attempts to describe this complexity and how we divide our liabilities and assets among different groups. So when I do my presentation, so I can highlight a couple of the charts we have in the reports to help you see a little bit better how it works.
No, I read that, and I thought I understood it, but I'm not entirely certain I do, and it's something that's, I think, significant.
Yeah, and it is extremely complicated, as you can, as you've witnessed yourself.
Yeah, and I would say this is sort of a simplified model of what it is, but it really, from a purpose of funding and what we're doing right now, it really is pretty good, pretty good representation. And so once we, once we have these unfunded amounts, what we need to do is, is to get the plan to 100% funded, we need to pay off these amounts over time, similar to a home mortgage. We pay it off, and we do that with this contribution rate schedule. You can see on the middle column there is the 2018 valuation, which, based on the 2018 valuation, the 2019 to 2020 fiscal year contribution rates are set. A lot of these are fixed in statute. The employer's base rate in the sick leave, they've been that way for a number of years. They are fixed in statute, so they do not change. The employer's supplemental rate, that is, has, is a fixed schedule increasing, and as Dave said, that one could be affected ultimately by what the government's proposal is, but we haven't done anything in the valuation to specifically reflect that. And you see that under the schedule that's in the law, it increases from 8.03% to 9.88%. And that fixed schedule continues until the 2019 valuation, the next valuation. And then the 2020 valuation, then it becomes variable, which the state rate already is, and then it's up to the board to set that rate. So that puts the total employer contribution about 18%. The state rate, once again, the base rate is set in statute, and that's been around for 20, 30 years of 2.017%. And then the variable piece is, last year was 5.311%, and based on the funding policy and our calculations in the valuation, we, it is a 5.811% rate, which is at the discretion of the board to adopt for the upcoming fiscal year. And this is totally consistent with what we've told you and what staff has told you because the limit of the half, of increases in the state contribution rate to half a percent. So that takes the total contribution of the state for the, to 7.8% to the DB program. State also contributes to the supplemental benefit maintenance account, which we'll talk about a little bit more next year, but that's about 2.5%. And that takes this total state contribution to CalSTRS to a 10.3% of pay. Then we look at the members' pay. The 2% at 60 members, their rate, once again, is fixed in statute. That does not change. The members' 2% at 62 is a little more complicated, but this year, there's no change, as you can see there, from 10.205%. But just wanted, just remind you briefly what that is. In the past, we've talked about why it changes, and now we're gonna talk about why it doesn't change, which is a little easier conversation. This is, obviously, there's a number of steps to setting the rate, but basically, the concept in the law was that the members, the 2% at 62 members pay 50% of the normal cost rate. And remember, the normal cost rate is sort of the value of the benefits being earned, so basically a 50-50 share. And you can see that normal cost rate was 17.893%. This year decreased slightly by .03% to 17.863 this year. So looking at that, that 17.863% has not changed by more than 1%. That's what's in law. Has it changed by more than 1% since the last time it changed? Well, the last time it changed was the 2017 valuation. So the answer is no. So the answer is there's no change. And I should just clarify my comment about 50% of the normal cost. The members pay 50% of the normal cost, plus they pay an additional piece to pay for the 2% annual benefit adjustment, and that's that 1.205%. So bottom line is no change in the 2% at 62 member rate. And with that, I will turn it back over to Mark.
Okay, so here we're going to project the numbers that Nick was just looking at with you into the future. So this really, you know, the starting point here is the same. So for instance, starting with the green line, the employer contribution rate, we see it's starting at 16.28%. That's what Nick showed is being paid right now, made up of the 8% base contribution, the .25% sick leave, and then the 8.03 supplemental contribution. It's that supplemental contribution which gives us the ability to adjust the contribution rates to make, to meet the needs of 100, reaching 100% funding in 2046. That goes up, as Nick just said, to 18.13%. You see the green line inching up a little bit at July 1, 2019, and then July 1, 2020, it goes up a little bit more to the peak of the green line at 19.1%. Then, again, as Nick said, starting the next year in 2021, the rate is actuarially determined but can't go up by more than half a percent, could go down, excuse me, can't go up by more than 1% or down by more than 1%. The employer rate can't go up or down by more than 1%. It turns out that it looks like right now, the actuarially determined rate would be about 18.2%. Well, that's .9 less than 19.1, so it would go down to the 18.2% and stay there until 2046, when the funding legislation expires and the supplemental contributions go away. So that's the employer contribution rate. And as Nick also mentioned, there's a maximum on that. The supplemental contribution can't go above 12%, which would be a total of 20.25% when including the base and sick leave contributions. The blue line is the employee contributions that Nick just went over, which were 10.25 for the 2% at 60 members and 10.205, so very close for the 2% at 62 members. The red line is the state contribution. So we see that going up from 7.38, as Nick said in the first year, to 7.828, and then it increased, that's at July 1, 2019, the second dot. Then it goes up for three more years. We're projecting the half a percent increase to go up for the three more years until it levels out at just a little above 9%. And you can actually see it coming down a little bit. That's the actuarial assets are recognizing some of the gains that are in the pipeline, so to speak, but really, we see it as leveling off right now at a little over 9%. And then the gold line at the very top is just the sum of all three of the lines at the bottom. So that would be the total contribution rate calculated or projected as a percent of member payroll. Any questions on that before I go on? Okay, so the next chart might answer the question, well, that's, that's good, but don't these change every year? Well, in fact, they do change every year. So here we compare what the, what we would have projected last year to what we're projecting this year. So for instance, with the state contribution in red, the dotted line is what we would have projected last year. The solid line is what we're projecting this year. So we're projecting a contribution rate that's about 1% lower once all of the half a percent increases are phased in than we were last year. So the takeaway from that is that the state is very sensitive to investment experience. So, so far, that seems to make sense. Good returns, you earn 9% instead of 7, and the state contribution rate goes down. What happens with the employer rate, and I think this is getting back to your question, is a little bit less, well, we like to call it counterintuitive. So there was some good experience. The employer rate is going to be slightly higher than it otherwise would have been. It's much, much less sensitive to the investment return, but it's going to be slightly higher. And since there was a request to explain that, I'll, I'll try, I will try my best to explain what's going on there. If you think about the 1990 benefit structure, you know, back in 1990, we had a benefit structure, and that's what the state is on the hook for, the assets and the liabilities based on that. Well, eight.
The time on.
Well, I can tell you that right now, it's, instead of 297, of the total 297 billion obligation, about 243 of it is for the 1990 structure. So the majority of it, and that's, and that's actually very important. That's why the state is so sensitive because the state is actually, has the majority of the liability, so to speak, and more than 100% of the assets, which is what I was getting to. So, which is what I was getting to. So I want you to think about, the 80s and 90s were an unprecedented time of good investment returns, and the plan was very well-funded at the end of that period, and some benefit increases were made. Actually, and those benefit improvements took two forms. First, the benefits were increased, which means that benefit payments since then have been higher than the otherwise would have, which has lowered the assets. Also, some of the contributions were diverted over to the defined benefit supplement program. So that is another reason why the assets were lower. So when we do the calculations that Nick was talking about, we say, well, we're gonna do these calculations as though those changes at the end of the 90s hadn't been made. We're gonna use the 1990 structure to come up with what the assets would have been. Well, if those changes had never been made, we would have paid out less in benefits. We would have received more in contributions. We would have more assets than we have today. So essentially, the state gets credit for over 100%. So that's, and I hope this is getting at what your question was, but, but what that means is that, two things. First, the state is very sensitive to investment returns because they have over 100% of the assets. Now, here's the, even, I haven't even reached the strangest part yet. What about the employer? Well, if the state has over 100% of the assets, the employer has negative assets. And I really don't want to go too far. I used to be a math teacher, and I remember multiplying negative numbers. That was the thing I tried to stay away from. But, but, yeah. But, but the point is that an investment gain would go in the opposite, you know, if you, if you have a, well, I guess I'll say it, if you, if you actually had negative assets and you lost money on them, they'd be less negative. So that's, that's why it goes in the opposite direction. Fortunately, it's applied to a much smaller number. The state really, in the 1990 benefit structure, has the lion's share, as it were, of both the assets and the liabilities. Is that? Okay. Yeah, it's, well, helping is probably about all I'm gonna be able to accomplish on that one.
Yeah, I think this slide really just kind of caps. Yeah, I think this slide really just kind of captures what the, the net impact of the funding policy is, is, is the, as Mark talked about, sensitivity versus nonsensitivity, and the, you know, the state rates moving up, and then the employer rate moving slightly in the opposite direction.
Fantastic summary. So, moving to the next, this is a classic slide. This, this is a, you know, we have, we have those slides, you know, that we put in the album, you know, and we want to go back to them, well, this is what, this is one of those slides. Think about your family history album, this is CalSTRS Family History Album. At the time that the funding legislation was put into place, we looked at two things. What would happen without the funding legislation? That was not a pretty picture, that was the red line, the system was projected to run out of assets in 2046. And then what was the impact of the funding legislation? Well, that's the green line, and that shows the system making it to 100% funded by 2046. We'd much rather be on the green line trajectory than the red line trajectory. And you, you actually see initially, the green line starts going down a little bit and then goes up. That's because the contributions grade in, and it takes a while for those to kick in to the point that we're actually turning the corner and going back up. That's where we are now. We're now turning the corner, and we're going back up. Now, the interesting question is to compare that green line, which is where we thought we would be back when the funding legislation was put in place in 2014, to where we are today, and that's what's on the next slide. How are we doing? Well, the dotted green line here is the line, is the green line from the prior slide, which is where we expected to be in 2014 with the funding legislation. The blue line is where we are now, based on the, based on the funding legislation, and it gets to just about the same place, 100% funded at 2046. So as long as the funding legislation is working, this graph is going to be relatively boring, because we get to 100% funded at 2046. And actuaries are not noted for being interesting people, so we like it when this slide is boring. We, we are very happy when the funding plan is working. It's, and again, what's really, one of the key things here, I mean, the first key thing was getting the additional resources coming in, but the other key thing about the funding plan is it's not so much the funding level that adapts, it's the contributions, those supplemental contributions from the state and the employer that adapt. So the story you don't see on this graph is that the state and the employer contributions, or at least the projected contributions, have had to adjust so that we will reach 100% funded in 2046.
And Mark, on that previous, can you go back with the previous slide?
Yes.
Yeah. What year did we lower the assumed rate of return to 7%? Was that?
We did, we did it in two phases, in 2017 and 2018, and that's a great question.
Because that's a question that comes up a lot with educators, is, back to the page Rick, you showed us about the history, and I mean, if you look at the last couple of years, the numbers are not great, we're at 62 and 64, and so a lot of teachers are saying like, I thought you said the funding plan was working, and, and so I wonder if you could just comment on that a little bit.
Yeah, that's, that's a great observation, and you can actually see it on this graph. You can see where that blue line goes down. As a matter of fact, initially, the, the blue line was a little bit higher than we'd projected, because there was a great return, over 18%, it's 18.6% for the year ending June 30, 2014. So we actually ended up a little bit higher than we anticipated, but I want to emphasize that without the funding plan, it still would have been projected to run out of money just, just a little bit later. So the funding plan was still very important at that point. But getting, getting to your point, Sharon, the next year, you see for two years, that blue line going down. That's as we phased in, well, the first year, we went from a 7.5% investment return assumption to 7.25, and we changed to what's called a generational mortality assumption, which means we're explicitly assuming that people in the future will live longer. Okay, that's a more recent development in the actuarial community. Then in the second year, we changed from a 7.25% to a 7% assumption. This has strengthened the plan, which is an important thing for us to recognize. As a matter of fact, when David and Rick do the risk presentation, they point out that one of the risks is people living too long. Only actuaries think that people living too long is a risk. But when we changed the mortality assumption to explicitly assume that people are living longer, we mitig, we didn't get rid of, but we mitigated the risk of future mortality increases not being included in our plan. Similarly, having a more realistic assumption, I mean, it's more realistic now because the investment markets have changed, but having a more realistic assumption of 7% means we're less likely to take investment losses. Any plan is only as good as the assumptions that it's built on. And so we now have a more robust, you have a more, the board has a more robust plan, because it's based on a better set of assumptions. It is more likely to succeed. And you know, another point that David does a great job of making is that it's, it's all about probabilities. We can't give you certainty, there's still risk out there, but the probabilities of success are much better now than they used to be. And actually, the, the action which the board took to lower the investment return assumption and to adopt the generational mortality assumption have put the system on a more solid footing. Wind me up. So, so on the next chart, this is, Nick showed you the, the pie chart of the unfunded actuarial obligation, how it was divided out. So it's about a third for the state in blue, about 2/3 for the employer in green, and you can't even see the little gold piece for the unallocated UAO there. So what we see happening here over time is that initially, the dollar amount of the unfunded obligation is increasing. That's because we actually have a very long funding period right here. So right now, we're not quite projected to pay interest on the unfunded obligation. However, the actuarial calculations include an assumption for 3.5% payroll growth. So if we were to look at the unfunded actuarial obligation as a percent of payroll, it would be declining. And somewhere around 2027, because contributions are made as a percent of payroll, as that payroll is projected to increase at 3.5% a year, we are actually paying more than interest on the unfunded actuarial liability, and it's projected to start going down at that point. And I want to tie this back into the, the risk report and the funding legislation. You may remember that one of the risks that's out there is a population decline. This highlights why a population decline could hurt the system, because we're, we're relying on a 3.5% increase in payroll to pay off the unfunded obligation. Now, I'm going to take a risk here, and I'm going to go one step further, because it turns out that it's the, a population decline hurts the system, but having lower payroll increases to teachers than we assume does not hurt the system so much. Now, it hurts the teachers, and I want to look at specifically at what happened this last year. And when I say this last year, the year ending June 30, 2018, it turned out that the payroll increase was less than 3.5% this last year, it was about 2.4%. But that was because, it wasn't because the population went down, actually, the population went up a little bit, about .8%. It was because pay increases were lower than anticipated. When pay increases are lower than anticipated, it reduces the future promises, the future liabilities of the system, because those future liabilities are based on benefits that are calculated as a percent of pay. So in this last year, the funded ratio actually had a gain based on low payroll increases. It had a gain of about .4%. It's about .4% higher than we anticipated because of that. And that turned out to be more important to the, to future contributions than the lost, the lost percent of payroll contributions. What is a risk, things that I, I feel, I feel like I'm channeling David here, but what, what is a risk to the system is things like, if charter schools come on and they don't participate in CalSTRS, then the population goes down. It's a decrease in population, which is a risk to the system, and which does need to be a concern to the system very much, or if people retire and they're, they're not replaced. Yes?
Yep. So Mark, can you just remind us or explain, what is our, our assumption on payroll increases, you know, that are built into the model? What, what are those estimates based on? Is it like historical employer data or?
There's, there's actually two pieces to it. So when I talk about the 3.5%, that's based on historical information, and we, we break it into two pieces, we break it into inflation, where, well, historical and also current economic data. We, we have an inflation assumption of 2.75%, and for that, we look, actually, we, we look a little bit at historical information, but we look even more at current market expectations. What does the Social Security Administration predict? What, what's implied by the current yields on inflation-indexed Treasury bills? We look at those type of things to determine the inflation. And then, onto that 2.75% inflation assumption, we add an assumption that salaries will grow 3/4 of a percent faster than inflation. So you can call that a real wage growth, sometimes it's called productivity, and we base that also on what other economists have been anticipating, and somewhat on what historical experience has been.
And the two point,
The last piece of the puzzle is we're assuming that the population is remaining level, and for that, we, you know, we look at projections, any projections from the, from, you know, Education Department, we talked to, you know, we talked to internal staff to kind of see what's out there, if there's any projections. Our general preference is to assume no increase or no decrease, but obviously, look to see if there's anything significant that would, you know, example, as the example, of course, are charter schools, if, if all of a sudden, there's a whole bunch of new charter schools that aren't joining CalSTRS, and then, then that might influence that assumption.
And so I, I forgot to mention an important piece, that, that's right on target, I forgot to mention an important piece of salary increases, everything I told you so far about that 3.5%. That's just the overall payroll. So we assume that someone in the same position, with the same number of years of service, would have about 3.5% more in pay than someone else with the, you know, the same number of years of service, the, in the same position the year before. We also have an individual, individual salary scale, which we tack on top of that. What will people, you know, I think teachers tend to have a pay grid based on service and education, and so we do a specific study of the, and we're going to do it again later this year, and present a report next February. What, we look specifically at what the teacher increases are in California, using the California teachers' data, and we say, what, what are the pay increases at different levels of service and so forth? So that can then be added on. So there's really two pieces, that individual salary assumption, which is based on CalSTRS experience, which is then layered on to the 3.5%, which is based on broader economic factors.
And that's something you're presenting to us in February?
Yes.
Will be. Okay. And then, what, just one more question, the 2.75% inflation assumption, that's tied to the market assumptions that we adopt as part of our asset liability study, or is that something that may vary based depending on your, your data?
We try to keep, I think, we've had this discussion, this discussion a little bit back in the, in January, when we talked about the asset allocation process, we tried to keep, to keep both aligned together. So yesterday, when you adopted the capital market assumption for the asset allocation study, you explicitly adopted 2.75, which, before bringing that to you, we had a discussion with Mark and Nick to make sure everyone was okay, to keep our inflation assumption for both assets and liabilities at 2.75. So we tried to make sure we used the same on both sides. So we will be using 2.75 for the liability side as well.
Got it. So we, we adopted it, but it was adopting a recommendation based on consultation with all of you.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on this slide? All right, I have one more projection for you. As has been clearly stated, we're not going to earn 7% probably in any year, but we will earn more in some years and less in other years. The largest risk to the system is investment return risk. So this slide looks at what would be the impact over a 30-year period of different levels of investment return. So the, the gold line in the middle is the 50th percentile, and we can see that at the 50th percentile, we're expected to reach very close to 100% funding in 2046 at the end of the funding period. The blue line is, is great experience, so I'm going to ignore that because I'm an actuary. The green line, the,
Chris, yeah.
The green line is at about the 25th percentile. So what this predicts is that there's about a 25% chance that over 30 years, the system will average something less than about 5.5%. Well, at averaging about 5.5%, we would, the system would not make it to 80% by 2046, and that's because the, the funding plan would not be able to increase contributions rapidly enough. And then you see at 2046, the last two dots, you see it starting to turn back down, that's because the funding legislation runs out in 2046, and at that point, without the supplemental contributions, the line actually starts to go the other direction. Any questions on that one before I move on? We're actually, to the summary. So the funding plan is working. That's good news. Yes, we will keep testing that, David and Rick and Jordan will keep testing that, and we hope the news stays just as good as it is today. There are still risks out there, we've been talking about those. There are projected increases in the state contribution currently for three more years, which is, you remember, was, took us to a little bit above 9%. That included the 2.017% base contribution and the supplemental contribution. And then we will be preparing an experience study to present to the board next February 2020, where we'll look at all of the assumptions, salary increases, retirement, and also the investment return assumption, all those which David was just talking about. And then, at the bottom, just in case you are curious about that unallocated UAO, it's projected to keep us not quite at 100% at 2046. Right now, you know, we're about .1 off. So it's not a concern this year, but we want to keep monitoring that closely every year because that is very volatile from year to year, because there's no source of funding for the unallocated UAO, and actually, investment returns can have quite a bit of impact on that. So the takeaways, or the action items for the board, is to adopt the increase in the state supplemental contribution rate, increasing by half a percent from 5.33, 5.311% to 5.811%. And then again, that's in addition, that would be in addition to the base rate of 2.017, and to adopt the 2% at 62 normal cost rate of 17.863%, which, as Nick said, will not change the employee contribution rate for the 2% at 62.
And that, and that last thing is more of a procedural item that's in the legislation, that was in pepper, that you have to adopt the assumption, but it doesn't really affect anything.
Again, just because I'm new, how did you select 20, how was 2046 selected?
So originally, so there, there was a long set of negotiations, and we spent over 10 years trying to get the legislature to adopt a plan. So based on the projections of when we expected, first of all, when we expected to become, you know, run out of money, and the fact that 30 years has traditionally been about a, a funding period for a system, so to fund your unfunded liabilities, although we will tell you that optimally, you know, something less than around 20 is, is a lot better. But based on those items, a 30-year payment to pay down the unfunded was, was proposed and agreed upon. When we got to the legislature and it came down to all the testimony, many of the employers lined up and testified that although 30 years was fine, they needed a couple of extra years in order to prepare their budgets and to prepare to be able to pay this. So in fact, even though the funding plan is five years old, there was something close to really a two-year delay for employers and the state to, to pay this. So it's how it got to 32 years from 30. So 2014 plus 32 equals 2046. So that's, that's where we are.
Thanks. And that's the most straightforward, forward part of it.
Exactly.
Correct. Yeah, it's a date that's set in statute right now. So with this, the recommendation for the DB item, I thought we could go one item at a time?
Right, I have a couple more questions.
I apologize.
Are you, are you suggesting, did you want to just, I, I thought we were going to take action on each item? No?
About one at a time, that's right. I was suggesting that if you're ready to, once you're ready to vote, I was just going to point you to TRB 106, where the actual resolution is.
Let me take Lynn's question, and then, go ahead, Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the report. I had a quick question about the demographic assumptions, and I know that it was a year, maybe a little bit longer, you switched to a different type of mortality calculation, and are you seeing that that's had an improvement in the actual assumptions that we're using compared to actual experience?
Yeah, we monitor, although we, although we review in detail the assumptions every approximately four years, every year, we do the year-to-year analysis, and yeah, we felt the, the mortality assumption's tracking pretty well, the experience with what the assumption is.
Mark, do you mind going back one more slide, the slide before this?
Sure.
I just want to make sure I understand, so the second bullet point, projected increases in state contribution rate for three more years, and obviously, that, how does some of the governor's proposals on that interface with that second bullet point with potential?
Well, if the, I'll, do you want,
Yeah, I'll, I'll go in. So we have been, so, so right now, with what the governor is planning to send, Yeah, I'll, I'll go in. So we have been, so, so right now, with what the governor is planning to send to help the state share of the unfunded liability, what we have been telling the administration is it's expected to lower the state contribution rate long-term by about half a percent of payroll. So since we can, you know, we've been asking you to increase the state rate by half a percent per year, what we're looking at is the, that third year may not be needed. It's a rate now, if the governor proposal is adopted as is, we would only be asking you to increase it for two more years instead of three.
Although, there's a lot that can happen between now and then on assumptions and investment experience. But that's the perfect world projection.
Correct.
Okay.
Because if you recall, just last year, earning 9%. Last year, when we were here, we told you we expect to increase the rate for another six years. That sixth year became four because we earned 9%. So if we were to earn 5% this year, we're probably going to have to add two more years of increases. So best way to remember is 1% difference adds one year of either increases or decreases.
I think it's helpful for me just to think, we really have to take it year by year. Just keep it as simple as that. So thanks. Okay. So did you want to, we've got a member of the public, but I want to make sure we're, I, do you have more to add to 5A?
No, we have nothing else to add.
Okay. All right. So this is an action item. Everyone's clear on how we're voting or what we're voting on? Okay. I'll go ahead and take a member from the public. Hello.
Hi, Derek Fines, Capital Advisors Group. We represent local educational agencies across the state. We're obviously really delighted to see that the funding plan is working. We know that over the past years, you've heard a lot from school employers. And mostly, when it comes to the funding plan, they're looking at the rates, right? And they're saying how much they heard. And there's obviously no doubt about that. It's a cost that school districts are incurring. But one thing that we've, I think, been able to do over the last several years, in large part by working with your great staff. And we had Jack down in San Diego talking to school business officials. He's not here, but you know, let him know that Derek gave him a shout out. And David comes out and Grant and everybody does a really good job of explaining the merits of the funding plan. And one of the ways that you're measuring the funding plan's success is based on the funded status, right? Are we moving in the right direction? One of the ways that we measure the funding plan's success is, is it providing the rate stability and insulation from market volatility that it originally promised? And it clearly is. And so that's something that we talk about pretty frequently with our school employers to make sure that they understand that there's a reason that your CalSTRS rates are going to go up into the mid-20s, maybe even higher, depending on how the markets do. But your CalSTRS rates are going to stay relatively stable over time. And that predictability, that insulation, is just absolutely huge for districts that, you know, they don't raise their own funding except for parcel taxes and other, you know, small rare exceptions. They're totally dependent on state funding in most cases. And so the ability to predict is really important. So I just wanted to express how important it is to see the plan working, to compliment the good work that you and the board are doing, and then also to compliment the staff who come and regularly engage with school employers and help them understand the narrative of what's going on and how the numbers are all working. And so that's it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Okay. So we have the action item in front of us. I would note a motion? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. Our DB program assumptions are adopted. All right, so we, going on to 5B.
Okay, so we will proceed to discuss the defined, oh. Defined benefit supplement program and the cash balance benefit program. What, the purpose of these valuations is to determine the financial condition of these two systems. They're very similar, so we're going to talk about them at the same time. And for them, we use a fair market value of assets. We don't use any asset smoothing. We compare that to the actuarial obligation. Now, for these systems, they're what's called a cash balance type of plan, which means instead of providing, being, instead of the benefit being determined as a monthly benefit for life, it's determined as an account balance, a cash balance, which the member could receive when they retire or perhaps when they terminate. So we compare the fair value of assets to the value of all those account balances, very different from what we do in the, the big defined benefit program. And then we determine the funded status. The action item then becomes to consider whether or not an additional earnings credit can be provided consistent with the board's policy. I want to point out from a bigger picture standpoint that the funding of these programs has been extremely successful, largely for two reasons. First, they're designed so that instead of adjusting the contribution like a traditional defined benefit plan, the benefits adjust. Specifically, they only guarantee an interest credit every year of what's called the minimum interest rate. And the minimum interest rate is based on the 30-year Treasury bill. So to the extent, oh, sorry. So, so to the extent that, that we have experienced better, better than that, that the system can actually make up or the, the plans can actually make up for lost ground. So specifically, if we look at the progress of the two systems over the last year, the defined benefit supplement programs funded ratio increased from 118% to 124.6%. The cash balance benefit programs funded ratio increased from 115.9 to 121.6%. The primary reason for those increases is because this only reflects an interest credit consistent with the minimum interest rate. Over the last year, the minimum interest rate that was credited was 2.64%. Well, speaking in general terms, if the plans earned about 9%, but the interest credit was 2.64%, that's roughly a 6% difference. It's not a coincidence that the funding percentages went up about 6%. Talking in general terms, as an actuary, I could get much more detailed on that. But that's, that's really what's, what's happening here. So then the question is, can an additional interest credit be given? Well, the way the rules work is that an additional interest credit can be given if after that additional interest credit is given, there's still a reserve equal to one standard deviation. Now, there's actually two different allocations. I'm talking about the first allocation here. And what the first allocation does is it gives a total interest credit equal to the investment return assumption. So for the defined benefit supplement program, the investment return assumption is 7%. The minimum interest rate was 2.64%. That's what's guaranteed to the member. They've already received that. So to get up to that 7% investment return assumption, it would require an additional earnings credit of 4.36%. Well, to do that, we have to have at least one standard deviation of reserve afterwards. Actuarial surplus right now is 24.58%. The standard deviation for the defined benefit supplement program is 15%. So we have to be at least 115% funded after giving the additional earnings credit. Turns out, we could give up to a 9.75% credit and still be, have a 15% reserve. And so the entire 4.36% is given. Which again, what that means is that according to board policy, because it's your decision, but according, if you, if you follow the board policy, that means the total interest credit would be equal to the 7% investment return assumption, the 2.64% minimum interest rate plus the 4.36% additional earnings credit.
Yeah, and our goal really here is to keep this above 100% because as Mark said, it's the benefits are adjusted and not the contributions. So if you go below 100%, you can't be lowering benefits. So then you'd have to get contributions which you don't have. So that's why we tried to set this higher threshold when the board policy was set.
Yeah. And that's really the fact that a, a reserve is maintained, a surplus is. I, I like the word reserve better than surplus because surplus sounds like it shouldn't be there. That's just, that's just the actuary speaking. But the fact, and it is called a gain-loss reserve in this case. The fact that this reserve is maintained is one of the two things which makes the funding robust too. We intentionally, the system intentionally maintains a reserve. And then in addition, it has a low guarantee on the interest credit. So.